I call to order the July 15th meeting of the Situate Zoning Board of Appeals. If anyone is here regarding the Stockbridge Landing application, they have requested a continuance in writing and I think I'm going to move guys that we just discussed that continuance now sort of out of order, but in case anyone is here, it looks like you might be here for that application, you're not, but maybe everyone got the memo, but I'm going to move that we continue the Stockbridge Landing application to our September meeting. And the reason for that is we have a little trouble with our August meeting and probably are going to be hopefully having some alternates for the board and we can't use alternates for an application that is continued. And so we'll need a full slate of these three board members. So I think that's going to have to be continued to September. Our September meeting, which is currently scheduled for Thursday, the 16th, but that could change. We typically will cover that at our August meeting.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Okay, we are going to move to our first application. And I guess before we do that, and I probably should have done this at our last meeting, we do have six applications remaining this evening. We're going to tackle them in order. We're going to try to keep things moving. Things are probably going to move pretty quickly, but we do have one application, our second application, which might take a little bit more time. And just try to give everyone a little bit of an idea of how this is going to move along. Our first application brought by Daniel P. Whitting of 116 Country Way in Situate requesting a special permit or finding in accordance with MGLA, oh, excuse me, MGL 48, Section 6, and Section 520.4 of the Situate zoning bylaw and/or any other relief the Board of Appeals may grant to allow for the construction of an addition to a pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling within 150 feet of a tributary at 116 Country Way in Situate. Greg?
Good evening.
Good evening. Can you tell us a little bit about the application?
For the record, Gregory Morris, Registered Engineer, Morris Engineering, representing the applicant property owner Daniel Whitting. As we just read into the record, this is a request for a special permit in accordance with Chapter 48, Section 8, as well as Section 520.4 of the local bylaw with respect to the buffer zone associated with the tributary inside of the Water Resource Protection District. The property is located at 116 Country Way. Looking at the plan, Country Way is on the left-hand side of the page. The property line is the dark line in black. It's in the R2 zoning district. It has an existing home on it. The home was constructed in 1958. The home complies generally with setbacks with the exception of the front yard setback. The front yard is at 24.3 feet. Otherwise, the lot itself is conforming at 27,000 square feet of area and more than 100 feet of frontage. The proposal here is to add an addition. The additions on the back of the house I've highlighted in green on the plan with the location of the addition is. The addition complies with all front, side, rear yard setbacks. However, there's a nonconformity with respect to the lot width which is created. At that location, the lot width is 119 feet, as well as the Section 520.4 buffer zone, which is the buffer zone to the tributary. As you look at the plans, the property line on the south here, this is referred to as the Tan Brook, which is a perennial river. Section 520.4 has a do not disturb zone of 150 feet, which is this line here. So you'll see that the entire property is inside of the 150-foot buffer. The bylaw says that 150-foot buffer is supposed to be a no disturbance buffer. Generally, on new construction lots, I've seen they kind of require that to be exactly that, that there's no work proposed inside the 150-foot. It's left in its urgent state. In this case here, the 150-foot buffer has previously been developed. Where we're proposing to do the work, the construction of the addition, that's an existing bulkhead on the house. It's an existing lawn area. We feel that it would not be a detriment to the Water Resource Protection District as the house, as you will see, is closer already to the tributary area. Runoffs associated with this project would all be handled in accordance with the other requirements of the bylaw. So we ask for relief on 520.4 as well. The addition represents a 35% increase in the floor area of the property. The existing house is at 1840 square feet. The proposal is 2481, which is in keeping with the surrounding neighborhood. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. You know, putting the buffer zone aside for a moment, I don't see much that concerns me at all. This is a modest addition entirely within the building envelope. In terms of the buffer, Bob, I just, my guess is that for constructions such as this, there are certain additional steps that can be taken to provide protection to the tributary and the water source. Am I incorrect in that?
I believe this is also going to fall under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission at some point. So there'll be an order, let's just say the board approves this plan tonight, there'll be an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission, which will speak to silt fence and, you know, all of the measures they take for protection.
And that order of conditions, again, please correct me if I'm wrong, will take into account the proximity to the tributary?
Well, yes, certainly.
Right.
I mean, the proximity issue is, if it were a tributary, then the order of conditions would say exactly the same thing. It's simply a water resource area that needs to be protected during construction.
Right.
So the fact that it's a tributary does, in my opinion at least, come directly back to zoning.
Yes.
As a distinction.
Yeah. George? Anything else? No? Susan?
Uh-uh.
Do we have anyone for the public here to speak on this application tonight? And again, this is 116 Country Way for a rear addition. Yes, sir?
Yes, my name is Bruce Arbenes. I'm a member of Gaffett's Land. I'm also on the Water Resource Commission.
Yes.
Actually, we have liaisons on the field.
Fantastic.
And we touched on the issue that we're very concerned about, to make sure there's no runoff during construction. So we are interested in understanding what steps the developer would take to protect that tributary.
Greg, can you speak to that?
Sure. As the building inspector indicated, this will also go to the Conservation Commission. An order of conditions will be issued. An order of conditions is the day of permit. It gets reported at the Registry of Deeds and it's on the title of the property. It uplines all of the construction conditions. One of them will be that during the construction phase, there'll be a series of inspections that the conservation agent goes out pre-construction and post-construction to make sure the site is stabilized, both again during construction and post. We'll also be proposing erosion control barriers around the limit of work to prevent migration of sediments across Situate.
And I do see, Greg, it looks like you're removing some impervious area on the lot and it's being replaced with lawn.
Correct. Right now, the driveway for the house actually wraps around the back of the house.
Right.
It has a turnaround area in the back. We're substantially removing that rear driveway area. So while there's a slight increase in the impervious surface on this lot, I think it's about 300 square feet. That is where the addition is. The addition is generally runoff that's considered clean runoff because it's coming off of a roof surface. We are offsetting that by, again, removal of close to 1,000 square feet of driveway surface, which is a dirtier runoff.
Right. Generally considered, and I would defer to our liaison, a decent trade given the proximity. Am I correct there? And then if I could ask a question of our water resource, in given that change and given that the Conservation Commission is going to take this into account, I would be inclined to feel that this type of construction where it's a smaller addition on the far end of the house, and given that they're moving this driveway in the right direction, I'd be inclined to think that there's a strong argument for us to grant this relief. Is there anything that you could think of that we should be requiring or considering before doing that?
Well, it sounds like it's definitely the Conservation Commission people's requirement of construction. So outside of that, I don't see any problem.
Okay. Thank you.
Anthony?
Yes, please.
To Greg, actually. Greg, do you know of any precedent for this type of development in this zone? I would at least want to consider whether we're going to set precedent here tonight. It doesn't exist now.
I know that there is a house on the opposite side of the Brook and, again, on the opposite side of Country Way, there are two houses that are, again, with inside that 150-foot buffer. Whether you've ever...
They probably preexisted the regulations.
Whether you've ever granted an addition or any sort of work on those houses, I don't have any history of that.
Bob, am I, I feel like we've permitted additions on houses within the 150-foot buffer before with much of these same considerations, but I feel like we have. Am I remembering, am I remembering wrong?
I'm afraid I can't help you, Anthony.
Yeah.
It's certainly possible, not specifically that I recall.
And I mean, and this would be going back some, but, you know, what we've discussed on this board before is our, the Water Resource Protection bylaw is incredibly broad. And while its purpose is incredibly valiant, saying in our bylaw, which in, to a sense, our bylaw does say you can't do anything within 150 feet of any tributary to our water source here in town, is too broad. It's legally, we wouldn't be able to enforce it as literally as it's written. So to a certain extent, I've made this argument on the board before, granting relief from that bylaw smartly is in a way defending it. Because the way it's currently drafted, to enforce it literally, it would be very defeatable in a court of law, in my view. And so I wish that I remembered, but I do think that we've granted relief within 150 feet before. To Greg's point, I don't think that we've done it for new construction, but I do think we have done it for alterations. I don't know if it was for a raise and reconstructive for an addition.
I could add to that.
Please.
Yeah. So that 150-foot buffer, that's not a structure setback. That's literally a do not disturb, no lawn, not touching anything. This is a case where that 150-foot buffer is already disturbed at that location. Section 820 of your bylaw does allow the change of a nonconforming use to another nonconforming use. I would consider that that could be a potential here. If you're going from a nonconforming area that was already disturbed to another one that's probably less detrimental. We're removing lawn area which is fertilized, replacing it with a roof, which essentially creates a clean runoff. But it's not a structure setback. It's a no disturb zone, which is already violated.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, especially given that we're removing driveway area and replacing it with lawn at such proximity to that tributary, I feel relatively good about this. Either of you have anything else?
Yeah, I don't.
I mean, it seems to be a good mitigation.
I'll make a motion that, subject to full compliance with any order of condition issued by the Conservation Commission, and provided the modification of the driveway as shown on the plan is carried out, that the board grant the special permit for the addition shown on a plan drawn by Morris Engineering and dated May 6, 2021, and that addition being at 116 Country Way, and find that the proposed addition doesn't create any new nonconformities, and to the extent it exacerbates any existing nonconformities, such are not substantially more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood.
My second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Thank you. I can do that one. We're going to call our second application brought by Fred Caffrey of 21 Bailey's Causeway in Situate, John Barron of 14 Bayberry Road in Situate, and Jean J. Guamond of Baker Braverman and Barbadooro of Crown Colony Drive in Quincy, requesting an appeal of a building permit, number B21470 issued on May 5, 2021, to the subject property at 8 Bayberry Road in Situate. Thank you. Why don't, if we could bring the appellate counsel forward first. Here we go. Thank you very much. How are you?
Very well.
All right. If you could give us a little bit of background here and get us started. Thank you.
So I'm here on behalf, as mentioned, Fred Caffrey, John Barron. John Barron had some schedule conflict and is not able to attend tonight. The request us before this board tonight is that the petitioners would like the board to rescind the building permit that was issued for the property. It requires a property owner to apply for two variances. One of the variances would be the lot width, and then the other variance would be the height of the building. So I know you have small plans in the applications of us. I'm sure how clear they are. This would be the Caffrey property right here, next door to the subject property that's right here. And the area that's highlighted in yellow is going to be the 1,250 square feet that's in contention when it comes to the lot width and the ownership issue.
Can you speak louder?
Sure. So back in 2004, Mr. Caffrey was approached by the current property owner saying that he wanted to build a house on this lot, showed him plans, they entered into an agreement. The plans did not involve any elevation increases. The plans were simply using the elevations that were there to build the house.
Sure. And then just, I'm sorry to pause you for a second to make sure we're on the same page and to see if we can keep the audience up. Mr. Caffrey, the owner of Lot 15 on the left, who is the appellant here, was approached by the owner of the lot shown on the plan on the right, who has up to this point received a building permit?
Correct.
Thank you.
So the reason why the area that's in contention was important is in the R2 zoning district where the property is located, we need to maintain a lot width of 125 feet in the area where you're going to construct your building. So that 125 feet was needed in order to place the building in current location. A few days after the deed was recorded granting that land, there was an easement that went back to Mr. Caffrey. That easement, the critical part was the language in the easement gives Mr. Caffrey basically total control of that easement area for all purposes. The Caffreys, since moving in, have maintained a fence, and that area's been fenced in on their property. And they also maintain a garden. So they basically maintain total dominion and control of that area that's in question before and after the deed was granted and then the easement came back.
Can I, can I ask a question now? Or so, so your clients, the Caffreys, owned Lot 15 and 16, and they have a fence along what looks like the western property line, the right side of that plan?
Yes.
They were approached by their abutter who needed Lot 16.
Correct.
And they sold Lot 16 to the abutter.
Yes.
And they understood that they were selling Lot 16 to their abutter so that the abutter could have a buildable lot.
Correct.
All that makes sense so far. Then the abutters, I believe, paid $60,000 for Lot 16, and then immediately turned around and gave one of the more total easements I've seen, and I look at a lot of them, right back to the grand tour of that deed? And this is where I lose the thinking of everyone, really. I understand paying that sum for Lot 16, and I understand that it can make the subject lot here buildable, but essentially they turned around and they gave it back. Who was confused here? Because I feel like these folks wouldn't have paid 60 grand for the lot if they didn't think they were getting it. And I feel like your clients wouldn't have, maybe shouldn't have accepted 60 grand for the lot if they didn't think they were selling it. So what happened?
Well, what happened was the contract that was entered into showing the house that was going to be built, the elevation as promised according to Mr. Caffrey, by the builder, has changed significantly.
That, so I feel like what you meant was everyone was on the same page, and there was going to be a house built next door, but now the house that is planned to be built next door isn't in line with what your clients thought was going to be built, and so they don't want it to be built anymore.
Correct. But you have to remember that I also represent John Barron. He wasn't involved in this transaction at all.
That's fair. So he is an abutter to both of these properties?
He's a direct abutter to the right-hand side of the subject property.
Okay. Please continue.
Okay. So under the zoning bylaw, a lot is defined as parcel of continuous land in the same ownership. Our contention is the demonstrated dominion and control, and also the language in the easement, shows that the owner of the property that's subject to the building permit does not have dominion and control and ownership. I know that Walter Sullivan submits correspondence to the board, and everybody's saying, well, he's the record title owner. However, people have to remember, if you look at merger cases where you have pre-existing nonconforming lots, normally they involve nominee realty trusts. And somebody checkerboards the lots. So a property owner's own Lot X, next to them is Lot Y, and they have this nominee realty trust. The language in the nominee realty trust states basically trustee has no control, and the beneficiaries have all dominion and control. In those cases, on those merger cases, courts have found that since those property owners have dominion and control of both lots, they're merged for zoning purposes. So if courts are looking for dominion and control as to what is their guiding factor, the reverse analogy works that if you do not have dominion and control, and you do not have ownership of that area of land, and then you do not have a continuous parcel.
I understand your argument. It makes perfect sense to me. I'm getting caught up on the fact that one of your clients sold them the lot for this very purpose. That's still throwing me a little bit?
It would throw somebody, however, it was for a totally different project that was promised.
Right, but still for the building of the house, which means your, your point is that the whole purpose of the sale would have failed regardless of what was being built. But I...
It's a good point.
I'm with you on the dominion and control argument. I understand. I understand.
Yeah, okay.
If we could, we're going to go back and forth quite a bit on that issue. Unless you have something else to add on that one, let's skip to height, if that's okay with the two of you.
Right.
So we weren't clear from the plans that were filed with the building, projected building heights were. So we had a builder look at it, and we were told roughly that the house was 33 to 35 feet in height when it was being built. The significant elevation, the significant increase in the elevation from all the fill that was brought in, we've been told from the people we had inspected property, was roughly 6.6 feet. So if you add the 6.6 feet to the 33 to 35 feet, you basically are now at 39.6 to 41.6. So our contention is, with street light, it violates the purpose of the height restriction in the zoning bylaw. You want uniformity of the height of the dwellings that are in the area. And basically, you're going to be causing a mound arms race in that area? What is there to prevent the Caffreys from bringing in eight feet of stuff to increase the height of their lot? So that's why we believe that that also is incorrect in your interpretation that was given relative to the height, and that the height also was being used.
Thank you.
And is your, is what, your height measurement to, what, to the ridge, to the roof peak? To the ridge line? To halfway between the peak and the roof?
It was a...
Because, right, we can go 35 feet.
35 feet, Bob, to the mid, 40 feet max?
Forty feet max. So I'm just trying to do the arithmetic and see, and see if there's a real issue here.
I... Please, go ahead.
I scaled the drawings. It's to the ridge. The 33 to 35 might be accurate. I actually scaled the drawings here to 32 feet. But, you know, that's possible doing it with the architect's ground plane shown as a schematic ground plane.
Yes.
As opposed to going and picking the actual elevations at each point around the foundation.
Right.
So it could be, it could be a little more, but that's, that's the range.
So on height for a moment, and we've discussed this at length on this board, our high bylaw is during construction, especially in Situate where we have some low-lying areas, we certainly have some flooding, bringing in fill is, is a common practice. Bringing in fill to, to alleviate yourself from having to adhere to the height bylaw is frowned upon, and we, and we enforce against it. But in your view, the fill brought into this lot, or planned to be brought into this lot, and the structure planned to be built comply with our bylaw?
Yes. I mean, there's no prohibition against bringing in fill. Sometimes it's done for aesthetic purposes, sometimes for engineering purposes. I think perhaps both happened on this lot. There's a septic system that's been installed, which I believe needed to be raised in order to function. So that would necessitate fill right there for that purpose. There's no, as I said, restriction in the bylaw against filling, filling your land. And so height is measured from the finished grade, average finished grade at the foundation to the ridge or to that point midway between eaves and ridge.
And did you have any concerns that the fill being brought in on this lot was an attempt to build a house that was larger than the bylaw would have allowed, other than the fill?
I honestly didn't. The house, for what it is, and even for the neighborhood, is fairly modest. That I'm, that I'm... That I'm, that I've looked at and permitted.
Right.
I actually drove by it today.
Yeah.
Cause I was curious. And I took a wrong turn. And the road, so the house behind it has fill too. So it's almost like level with that.
Sure.
So there, I mean, it's, I agree with you. It's very similar in the neighborhood.
And the reason, I mean, obviously, Bob's opinion is germane here, but the amounts of fill that you're discussing here doesn't sound out of the norm for construction in Situate. And it doesn't sound like we have someone that wants to build a house that is absurdly tall, and so they're bringing in fill to try to be able to do that? That's something we are conscious of on this board. That's something I know that Bob is conscious of. And it, this sounds like fill that's being brought in to build a house. And it, and it sounds like.
Well, and the installation of the septic as well. I mean, that, that necessitated bringing in fill.
If I could point out the fact that the septic is located in front of the house in the front yard.
Sure.
And the highest elevation height of the fill is behind where the septic is going to be, where the house is going to be placed. So to me, that argument seems a little odd. You would think that you would bring up and level to each other as far as having the septic lower, and the house higher are different. And I believe there's some abutters here, and they're the ones that have told me the extensive amount of fill that has been brought in. And the fill's been placed overall on the site, and then also to increase the height.
Sure. And Bob, I don't know if you have it in front of you. What's the permitted height of the home? Do you know? Sorry.
Uh, I don't think, I don't think we note on the permit.
As long as they comply with, I understand.
It doesn't exist.
I understand. That's something we typically see when a special permit is needed, but not for you. I understand.
Correct. And very honestly, what documentation I have isn't even close to the limit.
Right.
That zoning gives you. So it wouldn't have occurred to me to, to flag that.
And how much fill are you alleging is being brought in?
The abutters address that. They're the ones that have provided, I mean, had they brought in this amount of fill, watching it over a period of time.
Well, I think we also, we also have a letter from an engineering company, I believe, if I have that with me.
Letters, but I, so I'm sorry.
There is a.
Atlantic Coast Engineering and Survey.
I thought your, your appeal certainly speaks to height. So let me go back.
2,306 cubic yards.
Right. But the cubic yards obviously aren't.
Six foot six.
Six six.
Yeah, six foot six, right.
So you're, you're alleging that they're raising the elevation of.
Where the built, where the dwelling is going to be.
By six feet. And the planned home is going to be how tall?
I scaled at 32 feet, Anthony, off the drawing.
At 32 feet from, so.
That was my question. That's so.
From the new out, from the new out.
Even if we added six, we're still within the bylaw.
Well, I didn't believe your bylaw allows you to go over 40 feet. So we have 33 to 35 feet in certain sections. So if you have a 6.6, that brings the highest area up to 41.6.
So it, it does, but that's, so that means, so yeah, but that's your measurement and Bob's measurement, and I'm inclined to go with his. And even if we're splitting the difference there in compliance, and we know that bringing in some measure of fill is common and an accepted practice, it, it seems like this permit application complies with height.
Well, that, that's where I was getting at.
Is what I'm getting at.
The arithmetic is, is either, it, it's either 100% in compliance or even in your best argument mathem, arithmetically, right, we're talking about a foot. So that's, that's.
Yeah.
Right. So I just want to make it clear. So that.
If we take your, the, the max of what you think the height of the house might be.
Right.
Above the finished grade, and we take the max of what you consider was brought in for fill, keeping in mind you're the appellant, so you're probably not rounding down, they're only over by one foot.
1.6.
1.6. But you, but you understand my, my point there. And we're, what we can tell you for certain is that bringing in some measure of fill when you're going to undergo a construction project like this is common, especially in this neighborhood. Bob, would you agree?
Yes.
So I, I, yeah, I think we're, obviously, we're going to hear from.
Yeah.
The property owner, and we're, we're going to hear from some of the abutters.
Absolutely.
I, I would like to hear more on the easement, a little more nuanced.
I, I agree.
And I, and I think for your, you and your client's purposes, there's a little more teeth to the appeal in that section.
Agreed.
I completely agree.
All right. Um, attorney Sullivan, would you think now would be a good time for your turn?
I think it would be an excellent time.
Okay. Fantastic. Would you like to come forward?
I still don't come alone. I have my older brother here, Mr. Mirabito, who's going to assist.
Fantastic.
The property owner will come up to it, and he can add some color and factor.
Thank you. We'll, we'll probably have you back.
Yeah, this is, we're not.
Oh, don't go too far. We, we expect you. Thank you.
For the record, my name is Walter Sullivan. I'm the attorney for the property owners, Joseph Joyce and Tatine Joyce, who are here tonight.
Hi there.
So, you know, three issues here that I heard on appeal, although only really heard two addressed here, um, this evening. So with respect to the transaction that led to my client owning this property, um, he bought it, uh, there was prolonged litigation with one of the complainants, Mr. Barron, and ultimately, my client prevailed and acquired title to the original lot.
Can you tell us, do, can you give us a 10,000-foot view on the litigation?
Sure. So it was a Tobin versus McCarthy issue, essentially. There were two purchase and sale agreements, arguably. Um, my client ultimately prevailed by summary judgment that was appealed. My client's summary judgment order was upheld, and he acquired what was then a non-buildable lot.
The, the counterparty in that litigation isn't a party to this.
No, he is, Mr. Barron. He is still here this evening.
That's the split line.
So he's on the left side.
Mr. Barron, at the time of your client's acquisition, was also seeking to acquire this land.
He was.
That, oh, yes. Thank you.
Of course. And so then ultimately, after a period of years, my client reached out to the Cafres, recognizing he needed 125 feet of width to make it a buildable lot.
Yes.
Um, they assented to give him that deed for $60,000. And simultaneously, it wasn't after the fact arranged to require an easement back. Looking at the bylaw, having it reviewed by counsel, my client realized he needed the fee in order to meet the requirements of, of the bylaw, in order to be a buildable lot.
So I'm not sure I agree that he just needed.
Right.
The fee.
Okay, so we can talk about ownership.
To be honest, I'm not sure I agree that your client has the fee when I look at the easement. There's a strong argument that the easement's a deed, and that it should have, maybe it did recite considerations, but it, uh.
It, it did.
The usual $1.
An easement that is perpetual and provides full dominion and control.
But it's not exclusive. My client can also, can utilize that land. He owns it.
I, uh, show me the grantee should be granted full and complete if it's.
Doesn't say my client can't use it. He owns it.
No, you're, you're right. It doesn't.
So that's my point.
Okay.
That is my point, Mr. Chair, is that my client, I mean, you know, let's, let's be, let's be honest here. He bought it for the 120 feet of width. My client still wanted their backyard, but they wanted the $60,000.
Well, so.
So you can't have it both.
Well, and here's, I understand.
For 1,200 square feet.
Yeah.
My client tendered $60,000.
Oh, I, I understand.
And he has the right to use it, but more importantly.
Yeah.
Okay. And the bylaw says absolutely nothing about use or control. In fact, talking about mergers is a red herring. It has absolutely nothing to do with this. This isn't checkerboarded. My client owns it all.
Okay.
He owns it all. It's a Form A lot. Moreover, this has been a process, this building, this building, to get to this building permit, none of which has been appealed as we got here. My client got a permit to, not only an approved septic system by the board health, but it's been installed since 2004. And these people sat on their hands. Nobody complained. Now they want to appeal after the fact? Gone.
I'm right, I'm right here.
Same thing with the stormwater. I apologize. I'm Irish. I tend to get excited, Mr. Bujer.
That's fine.
So I will calm myself down. But the, the stormwater permit is another thing. You know, they, they, they talk about there not being safeguards and, and that stormwater permit provided all kinds of safeguards and conditions. It's very detailed, and it wasn't appealed. So the Form A, not appealed. All of that stuff, never done. My client owns the lot.
Yep.
It has 120 feet of width. It, control has nothing, it's not in the bylaw. My client, my, my colleague cites to no case law. He cites no statute. And the bylaw is silent on control. My client owns the lot. My client has the fee. He has the right to build this home for purposes of the bylaw. I don't want to brush off if you have any questions about that, but Mr. Mirabito is here to talk about the fill and the height. Um, if there's any factual history, I have the greatest historian in the world right here on this lot.
Fantastic. Hello.
Hi.
Um, we could, we could go 12 rounds on whether full and complete is exclusive. I think probably if we went back and your client knew what they wanted to do with this lot, maybe the easement wouldn't have been so full and complete. What sticks for me is this isn't a future property owner next door that thought that this was their land and now is, and thought next door was an unbuildable lot because it was only a 100 feet wide. These are the folks that were part and parcel to this transaction and to your, well, well-expressed point, cashed a check. Now saying that the lot isn't buildable because it doesn't have width doesn't sit right for me.
It's disingenuous. And they've watched it being improved.
And, yeah, and that's an, that's an interesting point as well. You know, the, yeah, the, it's, it's interesting. You understand if, if we started accepting folks to say, all right, I'm going to sell half of my lot to you, you're going to give me a full easement back, and I'm going to fence it off. And now both of us or you have much more room to go right up to the property line for your setback. That's not going to work.
Yeah, right. Cause you could see a bilateral.
This isn't this, and in fairness to Mr. Vogel, who issued the permit, he was presented with a plan.
Oh, yeah. No, no. And I'm, I'm going there. Bob, you did, the easement wasn't put in front of you, and no, and that is not lost on us.
And the burden of proof rests with the appellant here.
That is correct.
And they haven't even come close to meeting that burden. I would respectfully suggest to you, you know, they have a report from an engineer who's not here, who's never been on the property, and has had nothing to do with the process of developing this property. We have Mr. Mirabito, who's been involved in getting every single permit.
No, no.
And will attest to the height without, with, with, with engineering certainty.
To be, to be honest, as, as much as I love hearing from Paul, and I wouldn't be surprised if we're going to hear from him again tonight, I, I don't see much value in the, you needed a variance for height argument. I, I just don't.
No, but I'd like it so we can dismiss it.
Yeah.
If we could, if we can resolve that issue.
Yeah.
Once and for all here with that testimony.
Yeah, if it's irrelevant to the.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I'm not quite done with the easement.
Oh, well, I don't think we're done with the easement.
Had, you understand my point about this easement. If we start trading easements and selling and taking easements back, if, if they would have sold this lot, right? We have a fully buildable lot next door. The easement back makes it a little complicated. And we can't, we can't let people start doing that. There wouldn't be any more side setbacks in between these two lots. You can't, you can't both have it for the use of zoning.
Right.
My.
I mean, you could end up with a fence two inches away from somebody's wall.
Well, and, and my question is, if lot 16 makes your client's lot buildable, does it make lot 15, what, it can't be pre-existing non-con, now lot 15 isn't wide enough, right?
Uh, no, that's not the case, because lot 15 fronts on Baybury, I mean, on Henry Turner Bailey.
On Bailey's.
So they, they didn't.
Calls right here.
They didn't render themselves non-conforming.
But so for instance, with, with their rear setback, their rear setback would need to be.
20 feet.
To lot 16, which it is, but if they wanted to put on an addition, you can't both have it.
I would agree.
For, well, yeah, you agree because you, because you're.
I absolutely agree.
Um, but sir, you understand what I'm saying.
I do. I understand what you're saying.
You can't.
But they understood this, and we have plans that show, the Real Estate Act shows the limitations that they have. Take Lally on this.
Well, and I, I tend to agree, cashed a check.
So at the, um, at the time that you, uh, bought that lot.
Yeah.
Um, you showed your neighbor's plans.
Yeah.
Was the house on the same location it is now?
Yes, and let me clarify that. I did not show him a building plan, but part of the contract, the PNS with the Cafres, which we, we negotiated over four or five years. This was not a spontaneous thing. Simultaneously, being in court with John Barron, for five years, Fred and I were negotiating and discussing the price of going up. Kuteley knew, it was attached to the PNS, a kind of an idea what we're doing. You see this plan A, or I have it if you'd like to see it. And it shows the height, and you know the height it's always been? About 20, 18 feet. The street is, the center of this lot on the street is 18.4. The house is set at about 18. If you look at the septic, which was put in back in 06, 07, I had a building firm to build a house at that time. And so the lot had collapsed. I put the septic in and wrapped it up and hung it up. But the septic, if you look at the specifics in the septic, the tank shows at about 18. The elevation around the house at about 18. Back at the time that I purchased from Fred and Jill, it was known on the paperwork at about 18. So there's a lot of things to be said tonight, but we'll try to state the fact that are not accurate. So the house that's being built in today is well underneath the maximum allowable heights. And even if the fill wasn't, it still would comply, or very closely comply. And I know that the engineer who looked at the site did not look at the stormwater runoff permit nor the septic plant, because he wouldn't say there were 2,600 cubic feet in the septic. Half of it is a septic. The first 75 feet is a septic system, six foot inside that set the standard, the road set the standard.
Did you have another, another building permit to build a house there?
I had a building permit to build a house here on the surface.
How big was that house, Joe?
That house was three stories, much larger. And the Cafres saw that I showed them.
Did they appeal that building permit?
No. That's the plan that I showed them. That was quite a septic. And, and to comment on this, Jill is a real estate agent. Jill and her team had a contract on my lot with a much larger house in 2017. That stormwater runoff permit was designed for her customer size, which is about 5,000 square feet.
And how big is the house you're building?
This house is probably, I'm not building it. Dr. Vincent has a builder. It's about 32, 3,300. And it's well underneath, and I have two-story house. Mine was a, before was a three-story.
I understand.
And it was never raised after that. Let me comment on this. I know the territory. I live on the street. I've lived here my whole life. I'm in the construction business. The property on my left, Mr. Barron, who's part of this appeal, is in an AE15. Dave Donovan, who wrote a letter, is, the fund of his lot is in AE15. I know the water's coming. Why would anyone who has the option build a? I know the water's coming. Why would anyone who has the option build more than knows comes? The people in that area weren't in 8E10. The last time FEMA changed it, it went to a 15. They don't just go walk six inches or four, they go up a lot. The water is moving up. Why not build your house so you don't have to deal with that problem? I knew that. I've always known that. Not a misfit to me. This was not bringing fill to get a high house. It was never the case. I know also that the neighbors have water delays. Why would I want to go down deep on that water delay? You just don't do it when you don't.
Okay. I think we're gonna hear from some of the butters. Do you guys have anything else before we do that?
No.
Alright, yes, please. I will call on you and, uh, just your, you can absolutely start. Just your name and address for the record.
My name is Joe Caffers, um, and I am a real estate contractor. And I would like to, because I saw that Jill said, yes, I am in real estate. Um, the property that I am under agreement, we totally demand this second day. And originally, while we sold the team, Joe, he told us that he was gonna go to Swallow Street and do a tenant's exam. And had we known that, and that was, it was a level grade. Several years later, he brought in his son. He was fine. The septic system had gone first and that was at grade. So no, I have no problem with it. I have no problem with the husband, though, because it's at grade. They brought in Phil, buckets and pockets years ago, long before he is gonna build. Later on, I did have a client and I said, that fill has to go. And since that fill has come in, we evolved the water pipe. Prior to this, we had a water pipe. As far as engineers, I, I'm in real estate. Most of these engineers who didn't want to get involved, I don't know why that is, because obviously they want to jump. But a lot of them have told me on the privately that that mound is causing water problems. And I don't know what lot you want to see it, but anywhere that I know that I know who's driven by it thinks it's a big problem. I have pictures of trucks on the top of that lot that go way along my fence. I, I don't care how small the house is, it's gonna look ridiculous at the top of that mound.
Right.
And if they have questions about why, you know, if that's basically the concern. Had we known it was a good piece of them, we would have sold it. And had we known that they're remembering to fill and cause huge water problems and also create a big eye sore for the whole neighborhood, it's way out of whack with the other houses in the neighborhood.
May I comment one, one thought, please?
Sure, go ahead.
Yes, Jill, once you said I said it would come down, I knew the existing grade ranges, it's on an average where the house gets built at about 19 and a half. And I said, yes, it's coming down a bit. It, we said it at 8E. It's always at 8E. I have a copy of the plan that I pulled the permit off in 2017, showing the grade and something up significantly to my. Then with, with Dr. Bill.
Yeah. No, I, thank you.
I was told the whole mound is coming down. He never prepared that. And I'd also say too, as far as I know, none of us were ever notified about the stormwater permit until way after that. And I even got an attorney at that point. And if you can shed what the claim board, they have a million letters from, from me and a lot of neighbors having a problem with that stormwater permit. Because I don't know how in anyone's right mind, they could say that runoff of this land doesn't cause water problems for all neighbors. He said, no.
Yeah, I, I can't speak to the stormwater permit.
So it said that we didn't complain. I guess why I want to turn that.
I, I understand.
We didn't have the opportunity.
I understand.
Got it. George.
Well, yeah, because I'm trying to understand the argument. Is, is the argument from, uh, the folks that sold Lot 16 that, um, they did not sell the lot and that the app, the building permit applicant should not be able to build a house on that lot? Or, or, or is the argument that you're objecting to the height of the house based on the amount of fill? Well, no, no, because, because we can't solve the problem if he doesn't own the lot. If he doesn't own the lot, it doesn't matter how much fill we take away. It's not a buildable lot. So the question is, is this a buildable lot? And are there any via, are there any issues regarding the height based on the amount of fill that was brought in? They're two separate issues. So are you alleging, I want to know if you're alleging that he can't build on this property?
Yes.
Okay, he can't build on the property. So then why?
With the variance from the lot width. You could probably give a little permit to the property.
But, but George, to, to answer your question for counsel, if I may, it's, it's a, it's a standard practice to say, step one, I don't think they can do this because of Y. If they can, I don't think they can do it because of Z.
No, I, I understand. I understand that, but I, I'm also trying to understand what, either it is a buildable lot or it isn't.
Well, and that's, that's for us to decide.
That's for us to decide.
Yes.
Um, but what I have heard from, uh, the appellant is really, it may or may not be a buildable lot. Um, I'm going to determine if it's a buildable lot based on the height of the property.
No, I think there, there are two separate allegations.
Okay.
Um, and that's, please.
I'm also here representing John Baron.
Yes.
Who did not deed any of that.
Yep, understood.
So I, I know, hey, this is a great farce and everything else, but if this is a farce, it doesn't apply to the zoning board, it doesn't apply to the building inspector, it doesn't apply to other butters.
No, I, I don't, I don't think it's a, it's a...
I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand the two issues. And I think.
The two issues that we have with the lot width.
I, yeah.
Is, it's my contention that they do not have ownership, dominion and control of that square footage of that area. Therefore, they don't need 125 foot lot width in that area.
Yes.
They would need a variance for that.
Yes.
Then my other one is that the height violates the zoning bylaw and they would need a variance for that.
Sure, right. So you said ownership, dominion and control. They have ownership of it, right?
Right.
When you go to those merger cases, though, the court does not look at record owner for determining dominion and control.
Yeah, but unless one of your clients is, one of your clients needs to make a pretty two-faced argument if we're not gonna give them ownership, right? So let's say they have ownership, dominion and control. I think that Walter was saying before that dominion and control doesn't appear in the case law or the statutory requirements. Where do they appear in the case law or the statutes?
There's their cases, they have discovered.
Right, but, no, so sorry. It seems like you're alleging that in order for them to make use of this lot for width, they need to have dominion and control over it.
Yes.
Where, where is that codified?
It's in the case law.
Well, merger's totally different than using lot width.
No, it's a reverse analogy that if you want to argue that you have two adjacent property owners that don't own these lots. And then a court comes and says, yeah, but you have dominion and control over both lots. Therefore, you have ownership for purposes of merger. The reverse analogy is applicable. The court is looking for dominion and control as a deciding factor. If you don't have it, you can allege that's part of your lot and you want to continue to hold it.
I understand what you're saying. Um.
Can I say one thing?
Yes.
Your, your name for the record, please.
Right, yeah, I'm married to this woman. So, Joe came to us. I'm gonna build a beautiful house. I'm gonna keep it myself. You're gonna love it. Get into my kitchen. I'm gonna put it here. You can stick some water. No issue at all. But I have a question. All the neighbors around Mr. Butters are here today where they view their, they don't want a house built on that mound. It's an iso. There's water problems. Every one of these neighbors have no issue with a house being built there. But you've got to build it at the natural grade so it cleanses the neighborhood.
I, I under, I understand your point. When he came to you and said he wanted to build a house, did, did he tell you that he was going to limit? Did he tell you he wasn't gonna sell the house to anybody else? Did he tell you that he was going to limit himself further than our code limits himself in terms of height? Did, and even if he did?
It's a classic major switch.
Well, but there are ways as a, as a grantor of property to protect yourself from that. You can put restrictions in a deed. You can, you can, I, whether what or not, whether or not what he did in his negotiations with you to purchase the property, were entirely upfront and honest, thank the zoning gods, is not for me or this board to say. Whether what he's seeking to do with property he owns is within the code is for us to say. And we can't deny a building permit or we can't appeal and turn down a building permit that's been granted because a bargain that was struck based on some verbal promises between folks wasn't carried out to everyone's liking. Whether, and that, that can be wrong and it, and it can stink. I don't.
It's stated here by the attorney that Joe, that fill had to be brought in because of the septic. He's told, Joe, it's up to your client on the spread of law out there that he was gonna take it down. So that kind of weakens the theory that he needed that fill.
So whether or not the fill was needed, isn't really something I think we're considering. It's whether or not the lot, as it exists, with the fill that's been brought in and the home that is planned, that was permitted, complies with the bylaw. And everything I've seen, the opinion of our building inspector is that it does. I, I don't, I'm not seeing or hearing anything tonight to think that he was misled or miscalculated. If I take the, the most generous interpretations of the numbers that your counsel, who I think was reiterating some of what the engineer that you hired, is telling us, we're only talking about one, 1.6 feet of fill that take us above 40 feet. That's entirely common in situat for new construction.
So I'd like to stand in my backyard looking at a six-foot, four-inch fence and look up to the mound. Now, can you imagine a house going down with that?
I can, because I've, I've permitted some of them. I'll, I'll answer that. I've, I've been asked that question before and I've answered that question before when I haven't been asked. There are things that we have to permit here on this board. It doesn't mean that we're psyched that we're permitting them. It doesn't mean that we'd be psyched about them going up if we live next door. It means that the code says that they're allowed or should be allowed. And, and we feel that, that that's the ruling.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven people here. There are a lot of real estate classes in general, but there's not one of them that wants that house going on that mound. You guys don't take that into consideration?
No. No, flat, for me, and I can't speak for my fellow board members, I 100% don't. And as a citizen of this town, anyone who answered that they did, I wouldn't think should be on this board. That's their property. What they can, and this goes for everywhere in town, and I've said this on this board before. When you own a piece of property, zoning code restricts it. We have environmental codes and other codes in town that restrict it. The opinion of a butters does not get to restrict what you do on your property. And if you wanted to do something on your property that all of your butters didn't want, you'd be the first person lining up to agree with me. I, I'm still having some trouble with this. We both sort of have the land.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, it's a, no, not just yet, I'm sorry. Um, it's a, it's a very slippery notion. And what I'm having trouble with is, I want to not like it. Except for the fact that everyone that wants me to not like it, knew it was going down and didn't complain about it up front. I, if someone get, just a moment, I'm just, I'm working through something here. If someone came to me before we had this application in front of us and said, hey, my lot isn't wide enough. I want to buy a piece of my butters' lot who has enough land so that my lot can be wide enough. Say, great. And then they'd say, but I'm gonna give them back an easement. And they're gonna keep their fence on the old property line. I would be like, well, I don't know. Right?
I, I would not advise them to do that.
Right.
Right?
And that's what happened here. And now it, well, happened. And then.
And this, but this property's feelings about the project went to hell. Yeah, but nobody had built on this property. There were improvements over time, but there were no buildings on this property, right? So this was one of those situations where it just, you know, you just continued with things how they were until.
So what, yeah, what?
May I add some information for that?
Sure.
I knew that I could not get a variance. I, I came to Neil Buggin before I had a PNS.
Yes.
Buy that property.
Yes.
Two years earlier.
Yeah.
And he said, Joey, normally you could go for a special permit.
Right.
But in this case you can't because the, the previous owners did. It was approved. The neighbors took it to court. And he said, based on that, you have to buy a piece of land.
Right.
To make it buildable.
Yeah.
And so I knew it when I bought that piece of land. And I knew I had to buy it from Fred. And I offered to buy it from John Baron and Fred.
Right. My, my guess is Neil didn't know you were gonna give them the easement back.
No, but it's a use easement that I could, that fence, by the way, I paid for it. I mean, I have it in my, my debt.
No, no, but it's, stop. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, we're not, we're not gonna, we're not gonna do that. We're just not.
Every city.
We're just, we're just not gonna do that. Sorry.
That's not.
I, uh, yeah, it.
It's a use, it's a use easement.
I, I understand. I, uh, do we have anyone else from the audience that would like to contribute? Yes, sir?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm probably a little bit 11 Bay loose causeway, just across the street. I'm new to situat.
Welcome, welcome. I, I promise, sometimes we're much more fun than this.
Well, I came, I came from Hingham and built a house in Hingham and went through a lot of this, so.
Okay.
I'm sort of used to this.
Great.
Sort of PTSD as I say.
Alright.
So, um, and I, and I don't know the history of all this and I, and I don't want to talk to the history of it.
Certainly.
But I do have a question, and then a comment. Does one have to get a permit to bring in fill into existing lot before, before you build?
Bob?
No.
No. There you go.
Okay.
It seems like maybe we should think about adding that requirement. Yeah, that's, that's changing though.
Um.
So, so.
I'm sorry, really. I, I think, I, you're right, but if, if somebody wanted to put up a mountain?
That's a good question. It hasn't, you know, it hasn't happened, but there are no permits that would come through the building department.
Yes, and it's not in here.
No.
Um, yeah.
So that, that is amazing to me because when I look out on this.
Sure.
As the person facing this.
Yep.
It is a mountain, right?
Okay.
So, um, and, and I feel bad, John Baron's not here because I, I do know that there's water issues and I've seen the water issues, right? From this perspective. And I was always under the opinion, and I'm due, that this land was gonna be flattened out prior to building. Once again, I want a house built there, because it is an iso right now, not having a house there.
Yep.
It will only improve the value of everybody's homes around it.
I think you're probably right.
And, and ma'am, with all due respect, I'm shocked that you would drive by this and not see this as a complete iso to the neighborhood. Because I, I, it literally, you look at the ground, the street, and all of a sudden it goes up at least 8 feet. I'm surprised it is 8 feet.
No.
I am shocked somebody would buy a house, put it on top of this mountain, right? So I personally, like, I have no problem building it. I'm just surprised we can't just take that mountain down a little bit and make it look a little bit more appetizing to the rest of the neighborhood.
All right.
Was that normalized? Normalized.
Okay. I think it might be time to hear from Paul.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Paul, can you give us a little more information about the mountain?
Um, you know, anyone that owns property, if, if they want to put a house on it, there's several permits that they have to get. This lot was not in the jurisdiction of the conservation commission. It had been in the jurisdiction of the conservation, the conservation commission, they would have to file an application to bring the fill in.
Mm-hmm.
But that wasn't a case here. But in order to get a building permit, there's several other permits that you need to get prior to even going to the building inspectors. In this case, one was the septic system. Those, uh, all, all of these septic system standards for the design of the system are controlled by Title V. There's a vertical separation, uh, to the groundwater, and then the system has a certain height to it, and then there's a, um, minimum requirement for fill after the system.
Covered.
That, that was all permitted by the Board of Health. That, that was one permit. In 2010, the planning board adopted the stormwater bylaw, which everyone is subject to if they tripped the thresholds and mislocated clearly, because it's a vacant lot. What that stormwater bylaws says is that you can't have any increase of volume of water leaving the property once you put all the impervious surfaces on it. Where this lot is vacant, there's no impervious surfaces on it, and the stormwater management system, uh, design is all more difficult. And what it involves is that you still have to have a certain separation to the groundwater, but because of the, uh, shape of the lot, and the amount of impervious area, which is ground, the driveway, and the roof area, and there's patio areas, um, the stormwater's uh, infrastructure has a, a height to it, which would be much greater than a septic system is. Uh, and because of that, and that stormwater system has to fill on it as well. Um, Mr. Joyce, um, employed us to secure the stormwater permit for a previous, uh, potential buyer. Uh, that stormwater permit was approved by the planning board, but after a, uh, a very uh, detailed peer review of our stormwater design, and once that was approved, the permit was issued accordingly. The, the fill of this lot is at a height that is required by a combination of the septic system and the stormwater regulations. And the bylaw is very clear, the height of a home is measured from the average finished grade adjacent to the house, which I think is around 18. And that's, that's how the, the, the architect would need that information in order to make sure the height of the house was compliant with the zoning bylaw. So having said that, the only purpose that they needed was, um, the septic system and stormwater.
Is the stormwater permit for the home that was just permitted, is that already obtained?
Yes, um, the, the, the original permit we did, there was a larger house, there, there's more impervious, impervious surface. What we did was to modify that slightly to accommodate the proposed home that is, um, a septic permit, uh, permit.
Okay. Thank you. Yes?
If I may, Mr. Chair, just a few brief points on the act of the Joyce system. You know, with respect to the first issue on, on ownership, um, you know, I, I think what I've been hearing from the chair is sort of an equitable issue about fairness, and I, I think fairness here favors the Joyce system. The Joyce has paid real restoration, and they relied upon a building inspector, and they told them they needed to part additional land, which they did. There was nothing in the bylaw that would tell giving them the easement back, which is a builder. Gives easements all the time to utility companies.
Of course.
And Mr. Dimon arguing to a still logical extreme, anybody who barely has enough frontage gives an easement to a utility company, somehow loses ownership. It doesn't make any sense. Now, I understand what you're saying about, it doesn't really feel right from an equitable standpoint, yet I would suggest to you, the complainants have unclean hands. They're the ones who took the consideration. My client relied on the bylaw and claimed any of it. The burden of proof here raised with the people trying to appeal, the building inspectors, and they brought forth no case law, no statutory support, just vague references to merger documents are not applicable. So I would respectfully request that, that before I hop over building inspector's, you should listen to the board.
Thank you. Do you have any more questions? Do you have any more?
I don't.
Yes, please.
I just add the fact that you were speaking about when you danced, Mr. Baron, you never got involved in any sale, or easement back, and Mr. Joyce apparently just said, he approached him for one, and he just don't care. So you have to remember, I represent you two different clients.
I, I do, yes, we, we do bear that in mind.
Is there another question?
Yes.
I'd just like to say that I'm Dr. Bessette, and I'm hoping to build a house that fits in very well to the day, but, and I just can't wait to live.
Well, thank you. Thanks, Dr. All right. Uh, do you want to make a motion? Want me to make a motion?
Everyone should make the motion.
I want to make a motion that we deny the appeal of Fred Capfree and John Baron for the issued building permit at 8 Bayberry Road in Situate. And we find in our denial that we do not see evidence that the property does not comply with the height or lot width.
Right.
Requirements of the bylaw. Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Thanks, everybody.
We, uh, counsel, before we let you go, we traditionally do not issue decisions on denials, and we let the minutes speak for themselves. Does that concern you in any way?
But would the minutes get filed with the town clerk?
The minutes don't get filed with the town clerk, and we've gone back and forth. They do, the minutes do get filed with the town.
And they're posted.
And they're posted.
They're posted online.
And they're posted online, and, and we actually discussed this with counsel, and, and they felt that that meets the statutory requirements.
Just as long as the minutes are posted.
Yes.
Then you can.
Right.
Yes, yes, and it, and it's all available on the website.
It would be after the next meeting, though.
Yes, that's, that's assumed, if, we don't, they won't be posted tomorrow. Because we have to approve them. We, we, we do, yes, absolutely.
So it would.
Thank you.
It would be after the next meeting at the earliest.
Right, because we'd approve the minutes.
Because you have to approve the minutes.
The minutes are prepared, they're, and then they're approved at a meeting.
I really want to try.
You really want to what?
I want to try.
Oh, well, well, good, good luck to you.
That's it, we gave you the shot.
Of course it was. It's paid.
Now, look, you put wrong, we were wrong.
That was fun.
You put wrong, we're wrong, but I don't, yeah, I don't, uh, but I'm okay with that, you know?
If we're wrong, somebody's going to have to run a check. Yes. Uh, no one, because that's going to be the minutes that we're going to file. There you go.
Okay. This is third applicant?
All right. We are going to move to our third application, brought by Christopher and Jennifer Morrison of 60 Mordecai Lincoln Road in Situate, requesting a special permit or finding in accordance with 48 Section 6 and Section 470.6 of the bylaw, and/or any other relief that the Board of Appeals may grant to allow the raising and reconstruction of a single-family dwelling at 316 Hatherley Road. How are you?
I'm well, leaving the building, my name's Attorney Larry Meadow, and I'm here representing the applicant, Jennifer Morrison, who live at 60 Mordecai Lincoln Road. The subject property, the scene is 316 Hatherley Road in Situate, Mass. Currently, the property is used as a, a single-family residential dwelling, was built in 1959. Again, the zoning relief we're looking for is a special permit pursuant to Section 470.6 of the zoning bylaw to raise and rebuild a single-family dwelling located within the floodplain and watershed protection district. Uh, it's important to note at the outset, the property is in all respects complying with all the dimensional requirements of the Situate zoning bylaw presently, and will continue to be complying after this reconstraining.
Other than the lot area, right?
No, the lot area is not.
No, believe, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, the lot area, the requirement is upland, right?
That is correct.
Yeah, so.
It was not when this lot was laid out, of course, that, that could exist at that.
Right, right. Put another way, and this is not an issue, if you, if you complied with lot area, you wouldn't be here, right?
Well, no, we need a special permit specifically pursuant to the wetland, I'm sorry, the, um, the floodplain and wetland protection district. That's why we're here, pursuant to 470.
470 point, right.
Right.
I think you need more relief than that.
How much, how much upland?
There's only 14,000 square feet of upland, 14, 705.
Right.
Right?
Correct, but under.
Talk to me.
Under 820.
Yep.
They could do what they wanted to do, they're not increasing the area by more than 20%.
There you go. That's what I needed, thank you.
They wouldn't need you.
I understand.
I see, I thought they were.
Please continue.
Right, thank you. Um, so again, in all respects, um, the house is in irreparable, irreparable, in the state of irreparable work ahead of the structural and mold issues. Um, the proposed work should be considered a substantial improvement to the property, uh, includes the demolition of an existing three-story, single-family home, and removal of a paved driveway, concrete block, concrete paper patio, covered pergola and a shed. Importantly as well, it also includes the abandonment of onsite cesspool, uh, and then the connection to the town sewer system. Uh, thereafter, um, a new three-story, single-family home with attached decks, attached garage and permeable driveway will be constructed. The new home and deck will be located within the general footprint of the existing structure. Uh, the proposed sewer and utility again will be connected to the municipal sewer system at Hatherley Road. Um, again, it's important to note as well, uh, obviously we're in a sensitive environmental area, no structure is proposed to be closer to the bordering vegetated wetlands than the existing house is now in proximity. Uh, again, equally as important with respect to the floodplain and watershed protection district, um, the resulting work will result in a decrease of approximately 1,476 square feet of impervious area on the property. Now, the purpose of the floodplain and watershed protection district bylaw is to, number one, conserve, conserve the value of lands and buildings and floodgrown areas, and number two, conserve environmental resources. Uh, again, it's our contention that, um, the board can and should issue a special permit for this particular project, because, um, the project is being, uh, conducted in a manner consistent with the requirements of the National Flood Insurance Program. Um, the improvements to the property, uh, will be consistent with the state building codes pertaining to flood construction, uh, and we're, we consult in consultation with the building commissioner. And, uh, finally as well, um, any improvements to the property, I'm going to affect the natural drainage patterns, uh, of any of the water courses.
Yes.
On or about the property. And I think what's most important there is that, um, we have a notice of intent filed with the Conservation Commission, I think we're on the agenda.
Monday night.
Monday night.
Fantastic.
So a lot of, sort of, the, the, the conservation elements of the project would be deeply considered by the Conservation Commission.
Yes.
Um, again, but, you know, the ultimate point here being that, and this is according to the findings of our wetland scientists, uh, that any proposed work will not have an adverse effect on any of the interests identified in the Wetland Protection Act or the town Situate Wetlands bylaws, and the project is really wholly designed to minimize the adverse effects, uh, on the area. So again, some, uh, what we're simply doing is proposing to take down essentially dilapidated, if not bladed, structure at this point, uh, and reconstruct, reconstruct it on practically its existing location, they're going to add a garage, but at the same time, we're removing, uh, you know, a net differential of 1,476 feet.
Right.
Of, uh, impervious material. Um, again, importantly as well, we're going to be connecting to the town sewer. Right now, there's a, um, cesspool out there, can't quite locate it, we're in the process of doing that.
Right.
So that's important from a, an environmental standpoint, really, as well, you know, as well as a zoning standpoint. The house is known to be raised above the FEMA flood level, which I think is 14 feet, so.
Fantastic.
The floor level is going to be 15 feet.
Right.
We're removing existing paved driveways, uh, platform under pergola, paved walkways, sheds, um, we're restoring, uh, natural local, local planings that are better for the environment, planning simple. I think it's a win-win project, and, you know, if you grant a special permit under the floodplain and watershed protection district bylaw, in this case, I'm not sure you're paying any use, to be quite frank.
I would, uh, yeah, I think, um, absolutely. How are the ducks? Are there a lot of ducks?
There are, yeah.
All right. So we. How do they feel about, I feel like they're going to like the new house. Yeah?
They're going to like it.
All right. I, I just want to go back and, and don't, don't get scared, I think, I, Bob, I see a 40.4% increase here on the square footage? Am I looking at this right?
I don't.
So on the zoning chart. And so I think the lot is non-conforming, pre-existing non-conforming, as to upland area, and I think you do need a special permit for, that addresses lot area, which I feel very inclined to provide. So that's good, I just want to make sure we get you all the relief you need in this hearing.
Understood.
Right.
Simply on that point, I'll, I'll go further to suggest that there is no detrimental.
I would, I would tend to agree.
Yeah.
You're probably right, Anthony, I can look at my notes.
That's, okay.
Well, it's just, there's different sets of data.
Yeah.
Oh, there's a, so I must have missed the other set of data. The new house area.
316.
So, okay, so we have, we have one piece of material that says the new house area is 1938, yes.
Do you want me to try and answer that? I'm Jennifer Morrison.
Absolutely.
And I worked with the surveyor.
Yeah.
And I believe the form that Keith Philavale took in with his plans focused solely, and I'm sorry, I don't have that copy with me right here.
That's quite all right.
In this pocket. He was focused solely on the house dimensions, and my.
I think that's what that is.
Were focused on all the impervious areas, so the impervious areas go way beyond just the existing house. So he was talking house to house, and I was counting in.
Totally.
Other.
Totally, and you're not the first person to interpret the form that way. Well, what we'd like to understand is the square footage of the home today, and the square footage of the home to be built, right?
That is the former house area, 1859.
Everything agrees.
And then, um, the new house area, 1938, so that's only a 79 square foot increase. Then, we had a lot of debate, and we tried at first to do what the house has now as a garage under, but the mean average grade is at 10 feet nine to get the garage under with the FEMA flood zone.
Sure.
We'd have to dig down to 6.7.
You don't want to do that.
And we, I came in and talked to Bob, and, you know, kind of the general.
Of course.
And we've gone through that. So we went back and looked, and within the setbacks, there is plenty of room, still needing all the setbacks to put the garage to the side. So when you add on the garage area, which, we were taking all of these as kind of like general.
Yep.
Dimension, so I'm, I'm not saying these are firm numbers.
No, no, understand.
But I'm going to go beyond, um, and the garage area is 672. So that added on to the 1938.
Is to 2610. And we wouldn't.
So that includes the garage.
And the reason we're asking this is the, the bylaw says you don't need a special permit for this if you're increasing the livable square footage of the home by less than 20%, and you do if you are. You're, you're going to get this, this special permit on that front, even if you were, you're, you're not here, and it sounds like even if you add on a few more nooks and crannies in your construction, you're still not going to get to that 20% increase. So we are back to you not needing a special permit on that.
Right.
Um, on that issue, the.
Yeah.
You came for the right reason?
Yeah.
We just wanted to understand if we were missing something.
Check the other box for it.
And it's, and, and they did what other people do, which is they added the garage onto this form, and that's all. Generally, I feel like this complies with the spirit of 470.6, and the addition's entirely within the building envelope.
Yep.
And we, we all love getting a building out of the FEMA flood zone.
Truly.
And the fire department, police department.
Yeah, everybody.
Do we have anyone from the audience that would like to question or comment on 316 Hathley Road? Yes, sir?
For a simple question.
Just, just your name and your address for us, please.
Paul Carroll, I live Kitty Connor.
Sure.
Same for these guys on Hathley Road.
Just your address for Hathley, just for the record.
This was Fenway Park, if you'd left the area on the corner.
Thank you.
Okay, that's up close.
Yep.
My concern is safety. I'm not sure how that fits in the zoning, but we live at the Indianapolis byline. If you've ever been on Hathley Road, it's an open shot from Dad's up towards Gambit.
Yep.
Traffic is big, fast, and dangerous.
Yep.
There are no sidewalks, therefore, anyone walking down to Egypt Beach needs to walk out in the street. There are hedges there, cabs, we knew cabs. He has a hedge that's probably about 40 feet high, I'm kidding, and it's about 20 feet wide.
Yes.
That hedge is a safety problem because it comes almost up to the street, so anybody walking down Egypt Beach South of Hathley Road
Right.
has to come out, and I watched it tonight, there's a church behind us, there were 20 kids going to camp, and they walked down single files, I was playing my grass.
Right.
They were probably seven or eight feet out into the traffic because there was something that, by the way, you guys know there's two red cones at the top of the driveway.
Yeah.
But there's a water problem there, they're going hitchhiking.
The hedge is in the proposal.
But the safety concern is the one I, that hedge really creates a major issue.
It's their take, it's in the proposal.
You're taking, you're taking the hedge down?
I thought it was in your proposal.
Are you taking the hedge down, the hedge staying up?
Remove the hedge.
Would you like to move the driveway?
And move the driveway.
That is close to the Egypt Beach, or come on and put it on the other side.
Good luck with whatever you're doing.
It's a win, everybody wins.
Everybody's happy.
Except for the hedge, the hedge is very displeased.
We'll keep it on the side for privacy, but again, the trend, I don't
There you go.
There's a case, and I like the good of bad.
There you go.
It's a great location, but my concern is safety.
Yep.
Piscinals, walkers, cars.
Right.
Makes for bad
Children, baby car, and we can't, I
Sounds like, sounds like the hedge loses, everybody else wins.
Point is to focus, you don't get in the driveway.
Fantastic, folks.
We've got the whole street here.
Folks, I, I like, I like that extra noise and banter when everybody's getting along, but we do have to keep it moving. Does anyone, yes, sir?
Mark Holmes, I live on 324 Hathley, so I'm across the street from Mr. and Mrs. Carroll, and that's to
Sure.
The only question I have was with regards to the pond, and what is the pond? We got two notices and one mentioned fill, and I would assume the fill is for the house, not to
They can't, they
No.
Trust me.
They can't.
Yeah.
The ducks.
Yeah, the ducks, but they can't fill the pond.
And the application, I was going to say that the application was really good and very detailed, so whoever put that together answers probably, I mean, most of your butters would probably want to know that information. Yeah, no, it just
No more hedge, kill the hedge.
It was well written, the hedge and the pond
Pond too.
The kids are
Any, anyone else? No.
With the street.
All right.
Good, everybody, looks like everybody wants it.
I'm going to make a motion that the board find, that's all right, that the board find that the proposed raising reconstruction shown on the Nant Tasket Survey Engineering Plan dated 6/7/21
Yep.
complies with the provisions of Code 470.6, and that the board should grant the according special permit. I think that's it on that one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There we go.
Thank you very much.
And welcome, would you do us a favor of writing that decision? Thank you very much.
Thank you, good luck.
Good luck.
Say aye to the ducks.
Me and Yano.
All right. Five and maybe six.
There you go. I don't know where I'm putting my stuff here, which way I'm going with it, but, all right.
Number four.
Our fourth application, Merrill Gibbons, trustee of the TMG Realty Trust, requesting a special permit finding in accordance with 40A Section 6 and 810.2 of the bylaw to allow the raising of an existing non-conforming single-family dwelling at 146 Central Avenue and the reconstruction of location with conforming side yard setbacks and less non-conforming front yard setbacks, increasing the gross floor area by 70%. Paul, hello?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm Paul Narvito, Ross Engineering Company, representing the applicant.
Sorry, one second, folks. Folks, folks, folks outside! Wow. We did, we'd like to keep the door open, it gets a little warm in here, thank you, be careful, don't fall down. All right.
You almost, you almost bit it.
Paul, go ahead.
Thank you, Paul. The applicant recently purchased a, a lot of structure on it, and the existing house is showing in the crosshairs area. The purpose was to raise the existing home, which has a lower level, a vertical basement, an elevator, and to be compliant foundation to comply with the FEMA flood elevations. The proposed house is outlined in blue, it's clearly larger than the crosshairs area, which is existing, will be a two-story home with no lower level, it's in a single file. The voids line is an open deck, which will be installed below the upper of the home. The lot area and lot width, and a lot, the, I'm not sure, the frontage, the lot area and the lot width of the house are 29.4. The front yard setbacks are on two streets, one is Central Ave, the existing on Central Avenue is 29.4, we're going to reduce that by conformity by placing the new home 29.6 feet, Central Ave. Likewise, on Atlantic Avenue, the existing front yard setback is 25.7, we're proposing 26.1. Relative to the increase of the gross floor area, there's an increase of approximately 900 square feet, and which equates to a 70% increase in the gross floor area over and above the surface of the town. So when this structure is reconstructed, they'll be fully compliant with the construction standards, we're going to do all the palmetary next year conservation, and I anticipate they'll improve the project as well. To that, I'll end our natural portion of my conversation. Oh, I forgot to mention the side yard setbacks are also compliant to, they're all greater than 8 feet.
Thank you. I don't believe I have any questions.
No, I'm just, I'm, again, arithmetic, I'm trying to figure out what moved where.
I, uh
Okay, that's how it's, this is the better
Just, there's no one objecting for someone building? Oh, there we go. Okay. I was, I was like, somebody's here.
I'm not, I'm not objecting.
Just, oh, yeah.
I don't have any questions.
You have anything?
No, I'm good.
Bob, do you have anything to add on this one?
No, it's very straightforward.
Yeah. Sir, please.
Keith Jansen, 148 Central Avenue, for the ABV, Hunter's North. I have one question, I'm in favor, but just, but one question, how high will it be, the pilings?
39 feet.
Okay, this is the first floor.
I'm sorry.
Oh, you said
No, the pilings are not
The pilings, right?
I'm sorry, I, I misunderstood. No, a little high.
So, it's in Zone V15, it means the first floor is going to have to be a minimum of 17 feet, but that's not 17 feet off the ground. It's, it's 17 feet off of the datum point, which is mean sea level.
Yep, sorry, we live
Which is, which isn't even high tide, right?
Nope.
Hopefully, yeah, right. I'm going to guess the grade here, it's not shown on the drawing, but it's probably, what, nine, Paul? Nine, 10?
Maybe even less.
Existing grade?
The first floor of that dwelling right now is 15.8.
Okay.
The first floor of the proposed dwelling will be approximately 19.0.
Okay.
The first floor of that house is going to go up about three feet, three inches from where it is now.
There we go.
And it's a bit below the other house, including ours, and so
Yeah.
I'm totally with it, we support it.
Great.
And a totally related event, this is the first time I've ever been to the ABV, outstanding job. I think it's a double, I mean, I think it's the second show
Yeah.
intentionally, but I was here, but you guys did a fabulous job, and by the way, there are no bushes that I'm aware of in this instance.
Okay, good. Here we go. Do we have anyone else? No.
Yeah, 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 that's right. So, on, this is number four, right?
Number four.
All right. On application of, yep, go ahead, first, application of Merrill A. Gibbons, trustee of TMG Realty Trust, 41 Mount Vernon Street, Braintree, on the request for a special permit finding in accordance with MGL Chapter 48, Section 6 and Section 810.2 of the Citrus zoning bylaw to allow the raising of an existing non-conforming single-family dwelling at 146 Central Avenue, Citrus, Mass. 02066, in, in pursuant to the plan prepared by Ross Engineering dated May 24, 2021, the board hereby moves to grant the application, finding that it doesn't create any new non-conformities, and to the extent it increases any existing non-conformities, such increases or intensifications are not substantially more detrimental
To the neighborhood.
There we go.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Here we go. Thank you very much. You come, you coming right back? For five? All right. All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have our fifth application, which is brought by Peter Zaccardi, trustee of the Gilson Realty Trust, 37 Moreland Road in Citrus, requesting a special permit finding in accordance with MGL 48, Section 6 and Section 810.2 of the bylaw for the reconstruction of an addition to a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling at 8 Studley Royal Road in Citrus. Coolest street name that I didn't know.
It's a great little street.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The applicant is proposing to put a small addition to the existing dwelling, which is shown in the plan. The 50 lot is the area of non-conformity, 6,841 square feet. In addition, the lot area, the lot frontage, lot width, front yard setback, and the right yard setbacks are all non-conforming. The, the proposed addition is being, the proposal will increase all these setback requirements, the, the side yard setback will be 17.9, where 15 feet is required. We're also proposing a increase in the gross floor area, 64% more than above the surface of the town. There, there are, are all proposed operations, so you just, a factor from the law, we also provide the zoning chart.
Thank you. So I do not
So we are increasing one non-conformity. Am I reading this correctly?
We are, I don't think we are increasing
No.
a non-conformity. Existing is 31.2, oh, no.
No.
It's not, it's still non-conforming, so, okay.
It's still conforming.
So we're not, I'm sorry, it's still conforming
Yes, the side yard setback is coming down a bit, but it
Right, but the front yard, yeah, I'm sorry. So the front yard setback is not changing, so that's still not conforming, but everything else is still conforming.
That's right.
Okay. Other than the lot area, lot width.
That's right.
Lot frontage. Okay.
Bob? Another straightforward one, I think.
Yep, really, no comment at all. I'll get to see this every day in my walk.
That's right. Oh, yeah? Is that, is that on your one? Yeah, just you one.
No, there's not much traffic on Studley Royal, it deadens
I can't imagine.
It existed.
I can't imagine there would be a lot of traffic.
Yeah. And you guys, up or down?
Uh huh.
Okay, that's right, Paul.
Oh, great.
You're the applicant?
Yes.
Fantastic.
Excellent. All right, anybody else?
No.
I give it another shot? I'll go for it, all right.
I move that the board find on the application of the Gilson Realty Trust that the proposed addition shown on the plan by Ross Engineering and dated June 14, 2021, does not create any new non-conformities, and to the extent that it intensifies any existing non-conformities, such intensification is not substantially more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Thank you. Who wants that one?
I'll take it.
All right.
We didn't do the last one either.
Yeah, you want to take the previous one, I'll take this one.
Yeah, I'll take the previous one.
She's going to take four and he's going to take five.
I'll take four.
Oh, that was fun.
We have to do the next one, don't we?
Yes, we do, we're going to call our sixth application, continued from June 17th, that of Joseph G. Gokwea of 24 Hatchet Rock Road
Yeah, oh, yes.
Requesting a variance to allow the construction of a covered front entryway to the pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling at 24 Hatchet Rock Road. That applicant is not here, and I believe procedurally
We dismiss it?
Yeah, I would like to, I'd move that we dismiss that
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice and, and treat it more as a withdrawal.
Right.
I think that's what it was, I, I like to give as much leeway to applicants who are without counsel as we can. If they want to come back with a more rounded out application
That would be fine.
I would be open to that, so we'll call that a dismissal without prejudice, but I think
Agreed.
the board understands what we're going for, anybody second that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. They will need to reapply if, and resubmit their application if they do want to come back.
Yeah, they gave them specific guidance, too.
Yeah, and I printed out the variance standard. We don't have any minutes to approve?
Additional business? What are we doing?
No, there's something
We have additional business.
Yeah.
I'm looking, asking for a request on an extension of a special permit, which is 14 and 16 all time.
See, coming up on his, is it two years or three years?
Two.
It's coming up on his two years. And was there a global pandemic that sort of stopped everything and made everything And was there a global pandemic that sort of stopped everything and made everything real complicated?
I think there was.
I, did he say how long he wants the extension for?
That's my question.
Until June 25th of 2023.
Roughly a year from when he made his application?
Well, no.
Bob, all right.
Twenty-two.
Oh, 2023, two years.
Twenty-three, he wants another two years. Bob, what do you think?
Certainly no problem with me, I know there was a tolling period, I'd have to have some paperwork to, to know what exactly when it started and stopped. But this seems very reasonable.
I would, I would move to grant the extension of the special permit to 2023, not to be further extended by the past tolling period.
Right.
I think, so
That's right.
In, inclusive of the tolling period, the special permit should be extended to June 23rd, 2023, would be my motion. All those, seconded?
Seconded.
Second.
Uh, in his letter, he requested June 25th, 2023.
I'm sorry, June 25th of 2023 would be my motion, which has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn. Oh, do you, approval of the minutes?
Two minutes.
Yes.
Those look good. I'm striking out over here.
Uh, May 26th, minutes.